Okay, good evening everyone.
Evening.
Welcome to the large crowd who's here with us this evening. The April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two interim special meeting is called to order. Ms. Bowie, will you please call the roll?
Good afternoon. Ms. Craybill?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Bullier?
Here.
Ms. Justice?
Here.
Mr. McManus?
Here.
And Mr. Wildebohr?
Present.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowie. Let's go ahead and jump right in. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Walker, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero. Okay, following the approved agenda, is there a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the items listed on the screen and post it in assembly?
So moved.
Mr. Wildebohr, motion?
Second. Second.
Mr. Bullier, okay, sorry. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero. We are now in closed session.
Morning at New Hanover.
To um the same one that worked with them um did some stuff here today.
What?
Yeah Doc Faust said.
So.
I guess you could. I tell you. Okay, uh, I know tonight. I missed this. Yeah, that's how you can see. Okay, we ready? Yeah. Sorry. Alright, sorry about that, um. Okay, so.
Welcome back, everyone. Um, next on our agenda is the budget work session. The um, the outcome of the work session is to provide further direction to the superintendent and his team on the budget that he plans to present to the county commissioners in May. Um, I don't see any, oh, for those of you who are in attendance with us tonight, um, I just want to remind you that there is no opportunity for the public to make comment um, at this meeting, but as always, you are invited to send us an email with your questions and comments, um, which we'll be responding to at a later date. Um, reminding everybody that's here that they need to stay in their seats um, and out of the aisles and refrain from calling out questions and comments during the meeting. So that the board can remain focused on learning more about the 2022-2023 budget and providing input as appropriate. This is so crucial to our students and staff and schools, um, so that they have the opportunity to receive the resources that they need to be successful in the next coming school year. Disruption to the meeting, including any community members in the audience approaching our work tables, will not be tolerated and people disrupting will be asked to leave. If this happens, you can view the meeting on um, livestream, YouTube, and every kind of sports TV. So with that, I'd like to turn the meeting over to um, Dr. Faust.
And I will yield to Ashley and let Ashley get started.
Alright, very good. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. So, um, okay, I'm gonna sit here just because the microphone's here versus, I don't think the microphone up there is working, so. Um, we'll get started with some slides that are gonna look familiar. These are similar, well, actually, these are the same slides as you saw during our last work session. However, I wanted just to bring that back up and just a little refresher on those slides as we're going into the development of the budget, going over those items. So this first slide is our total budget of four point, I'm sorry, 438 million. And you see there that, um, as we talked about before, the state makes up 41% of our total budget with our local funding being 24%. And then the federal, you see there, the reoccurring and non-reoccurring makes up the 26%. Our total operating budget is 401 million. And as we talked previously, um, the local portion of that is 27%. And now we're gonna focus in even further on that, um, 27%, which is the local portion of the operating budget. So here you can see what makes up the funding sources that make up that 107 million. The largest part, of course, as we talked about last time, is our county appropriation. So the county gives us 86, roughly, percent of that budget. And then you also see that that portion is also made up of fines and forfeitures. And so forfeitures is a penalty that's assessed by the court, um, for illegal conduct. So we receive that funding along with some other fines that come from our courts. We also receive some miscellaneous revenue. A large part of the miscellaneous revenue you see here is made up of insurance proceeds. So when we have damage to our property and we file a claim on, uh, with our insurance company, we receive reimbursement back and so we record that as miscellaneous revenue and then we use that revenue to fix whatever damage we had. And so that county appropriation that we talked about earlier, um, is 91.9 million dollars. And 6.5 million is, or is actually charter school payments that we're required to make. We're able to keep the 85.4 million. And reminder that the county funds us 33,434 dollars per student currently. And this shot, this slide is showing the strategic plan goals that we talked about at our la, at the end of our last work session. We, um, at the beginning of April, we gathered information from everyone and we were able to identify what the board goals were. And we were able to use this information to help develop our budget. In your packet, you should have a document and it's gonna look similar to this. It has a blue heading going across the top and it's labeled new program budget request. I'll give you a moment just to find that one. So this document, we have it organized by the board rating and also by the different, um, um, categories of the request and we'll go through that and, and we'll go through those totals. I wanted to point out, we have subtotals within this document and let's see. I have some of these broken down on the slides as we're going through and we'll be able to talk about those. The first section on this document is new funding request and these are mandatory, state mandatory increases. The salary and benefit increases you see here are, um, were provided in the state biannual budget that was approved earlier this year. This doesn't have anything to do with the salary study. So none of the salary study information is included in these numbers. This is just the biannual budget that was approved. So it included, um, additional costs for salaries where we're now gonna be required to pay the $15 per hour for all of our employees, that'll be a minimum hourly rate, or 2.5% increase. So whichever is higher for that employee is what raise they'll receive. We're also gonna be providing employer retirement rate increase and you see there 5.7%. And health insurance rate increases as well, 5.4%. And so I have listed for you the change in the percents, just so you'll have that for informational purposes. I did wanna point out, on your new program budget request document, um, lines one and two are the items we're talking about on this slide. And line one, where it says salary and benefit increases, that number includes all of our employees. And so a little bit later on, we're gonna be talking about our employees on grades 55 through 78 and that's related to the salary study. But this, this increases for all of our employees based on that state mandate. The next section on that document is labeled new funding or new funding request. And you see the first total there, so the first priority, um, that was identified during our, um, exercise last time was the student safety and wellness. And so you see the total there of a million dollars for those requests.
Did you say a million dollars? I think I'm seeing 109, oh, oh, sorry. And I, sorry, I forgot to go all the way down.
And on the second, on the second page, or at the bottom of the first page, you see where we transition over to, um, the second goal. And on the second page, you'll see a gray box. It's line seven, 17 on this document. So that first column, I'm just labeling those items just for reference for us. And you see line 17 has a gray box. So I have not entered a dollar amount for the salary study yet and we're gonna talk about that a little bit later on, but I just wanted to, um, talk about that for just a few minutes um, as to why there isn't a dollar amount there. And so we'll talk about that towards the end. So I have the totals there, you have subtotals for each of those, um, goal categories in the order they were ranked. You also have on the last page, and I, before I go there, you have a total. So we have a grand total here of the new funding request and you see that's 2.5 million. And then the new funding request total plus the mandated state total we talked about on the first page brings us to a total of 5.8 million dollars roughly. Underneath, you see a separate section there and that is gonna be for our county commissioner ads. So there were a couple of things that the county commissioners had shared with us that they were interested in funding and so we're included in that as part of our request to them. The first thing was a contract, giving us funding to take back a contract. Years ago, we had, we were actually, um, responsible for a landscaping contract and they, they took that from us and they were managing that for us and this, um, coming up year, they would like to give that back. And so we would start managing that again. Line 38 is our, um, scholarships for our teaching fellows. Let's see, I had some information on that I wanted to share.
So Ashley, you have 37 mixed in with, um, like it's added, added order. After athletics, you go 37 and then back to 28. Is that a typo?
Um, which, um, sorry.
It's on page two, um, where after 25, 26, um, and then it skips to 37 and then it goes back to 28.
Yes, that is a typo. I apologize. I apologize for that.
No, that's no problem.
Ashley, I'm sorry.
Yes.
With the, um, 28,000, um, and that's, that's an ad, is that for new scholarships or?
Yeah, so that'll be, that'll be four more additional scholarships. Um, that'll bring us, I believe that's 12 scholarships. Um, so, yeah, so we're very excited about that.
That's fantastic.
Yes.
So, at, at this point, are we asking questions or not?
No.
Well, there, there was just some questions asked, that's why I was asking.
No, I, I was only asking for.
Well, he did too, that's what I was.
We'll, we'll hold questions still.
Okay, so we should just hold questions.
Right, yeah, write them on your paper so we can come back.
That's what I was doing and then somebody asked a question.
We shouldn't do that.
And the final item you see there is expanding our pre-K. So there, the county has asked to, um, add six additional pre-K classrooms and so we're working on gathering the information for that. We, um, we have identified the schools those are gonna be in and Eddie, help me out if I get this wrong, but I believe we're gonna have one at, um, Wrightsboro and we're gonna have two at Murrayville and we're gonna have two at Blair and we're gonna have one at Castle Hain. You got it, alright. Thought I had it written down, but I couldn't find it, okay. And so that brings that total to the 413,000 you see there. And as soon as we, um, get the information on the, if we need any renovations related to those classrooms, then we'll be able to bring the estimate back. I just don't have all the information on the facility renovations at this point, that's why that's an estimate. And as, um, I'm sure everyone remembers, we had the Hill consultants come and give a presentation on the salary study. And so I'd like at this time to have a conversation about what they shared and what the pleasure of the board is. So when they presented, they actually shared four different options, but during the presentation, they were really recommending two of the options. And so those two were, um, to increase the minimum pay to 16 dollars an hour with a 2% step and that cost was the 17 million that they had shared with us earlier or doing a minimum, um, rate of 17 dollars an hour with a 1% step and that was a 14 million dollar cost associated with that. So at this time, I'd like to hear from the board as far as what, um, what is your, um, pleasure, I guess, as far as implementing a plan related to the salary study.
I have a question if no one has.
Pete go first. You're, you're asking for our input, correct, not our questions?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm just, you know, looking at and, and have worked with a lot of the TAs and bus drivers over the years. I mean, I think we need to give, you know, give them everything we can possibly. I think that, you know, the people that stay with us for a while need to get a good amount more than the people that are just starting with us. So, I mean, the 16 with the two, to me, makes more sense.
Misjustice.
Okay, that was what they proposed as a minimum, correct, the salary study? Uh, what would it cost for 17 and a 2% increase? Do you have that?
17 and what, or did you?
17 dollars an hour and a 2% increase, instead of one. Do you know how much that would cost?
Um, I do not think we costed that out. That was not one of, um. No, we didn't cost out a 17 dollar minimum with a 2% step.
So, um, if I, did I hear your correct, your question correctly? That this would include a, or would this include a graduated, um, like a compression so that we don't give everybody the same and so some people would get a huge raise and some people would get, um, like no, like the 2% raise? Is that what, is, is, will we hear that more in the, in the, the, the letter, the number?
This would, so the, either one of these plans would get rid of the, that compression that we had talked about previously. Either, either one of these plans would do that.
Okay, alright, just wanted to make sure.
If I could add one thing, it will mean that there won't be the same change of salary for everybody.
Right.
Because their steps would then be calculated on a new schedule. Because that 2% or 1% goes both vertically and horizontally.
Okay.
So some people would see a larger change in that.
Right, definitely, yeah.
Um, Ms. Walker?
I've got a question, so the, there's a step increase supposed to happen from the state as well, right? There's one that they're implementing this year and then next year they're stepping up again in hourly rate.
Right, so the state gives us a mandate of that, that dollar amount and a 2.5% increase and then we usually take whatever that increase is and apply it to our steps. And so, yes, as long as the state is giving an increase, we will be able to increase the steps. I think that.
So I thought I heard that they were trying to increase it incrementally in the next couple of years. They're doing 15 dollars an hour this year and then next year they're gonna, because they're funding that amount, right? We're coming up with a difference, right?
So the difference that you're seeing here as far as, um, on the new, um, new program budget request, those, that line one, when I did the calculation, it's just for local. So I am assuming that state's gonna pick up their expenses and federal's gonna pick up their expenses.
Ms. Adams?
Um, I, my feedback for this, I would like to see the minimum 17 with the 1% step. Um, the county just approved that, you know, an immediate raise and so now their minimum is 1684, I think. So it puts us in line with the county minimum. Um, and I also think, we all know that right now, um, everyone is hurting and everyone's talking about inflation and cost of living is really difficult here. I think having the opportunity to get more money sooner is a better idea than doing the 16 first, but that's just my thoughts.
Okay, um, Mr. Boyer?
Yeah, Ms. Sutton, when we say phase one, what percentage would phase one look like and what would it bring us up to in year one?
So, what I would like, if, I've got both of these things costed out by grade and so, um, if you guys want to agree on whichever plan, then I can pass out that paper that has the cost by grade and we can talk through that. Or if you guys want to see both of them, I can hand that out, whatever you would prefer.
And how many years would it take to get to?
Our plan, we're hoping for three years. If, if we can receive the funding, we'd like to get it implemented in three years. That way it's not when a lot of time passes, um, it seems to be, um, it doesn't go over as well with employees when there's so much of a gap between when it's passed and, you know, if it takes five years to implement it completely, so. Three years would be our goal.
Mr. McManus?
I don't wanna embarrass myself, but as I look at the two salary cost, if we go with a minimum 16 and 2% step, in three years, if it stays at 2%, then that's six times, 6% of 16. And if we go with the 17 and a 1%, you're talking about, uh, so there's really more money with the 16. Or is it, correct me? But in three years, in three years, they're ahead with the 16 and.
Right, yeah. And, and the further you go down the scale, it's 2%, 2%, 2% versus one. So it is more expensive to do the 16 at 2%.
Uh, Ms. Justice?
Is there any reason why theoretically, are we gonna be meeting again on this budget? Really? Can I make a statement right now? I have been. I have been on the board for four years, and in the past, we've always had at least two to three meetings, and it started a heck of a lot earlier, it was a lot more extensive. And I think that's more appropriate, probably, because what, what I would like to see is, I would like.
What is your issue?
That's, can I continue, please?
Sure.
What I would like to see is the 17 plus 2%, if there's some way to get that figure, so we could have that also put into it, because as Ms. Adams said, right now, we're in a crisis situation in this county, and we're bleeding our employees out to things like Domino's, where they can make 19 or 20 dollars an hour. And the best thing we could do is actually think outside the box and try to do everything proactively instead of reactively, which is what a lot of this is right now. And so I would like to see if we could get that figure. I'm very sorry that we're, this is the only meeting we're having. I'm very actually frustrated.
So, can I?
Yeah, please jump in.
So, the reason why the meeting is later in the years is because of the state. The state didn't give us our ADA number, ADM numbers, so we couldn't start a budget process until we knew what the state was going to fund us. And so it would have just been a superficial meeting to have, and we would have sat around and talked. Typically, they give us our numbers back in, was it maybe February-ish?
Right.
And we would start.
January, February.
The, the meeting earlier, but because the state didn't give us those numbers, we didn't have anything to go on. As far as our budget meetings, we do the budget, starting with the board priorities. So the board gives us their priorities, and then there's a recommendation. There's also a process where we have to take it to our county commissioners.
I know that.
And then after that, then the budget by law has to be voted on by June 30th.
Mm-hmm.
So that's where we are. The, you have to also understand that we're voting on new money, old money, that 403, what, 400 million? Has already been voted and approved, so that's old money. So this budget, what we're talking about right now, are new funds that we'll be taking to the county commissioners for our ask.
Okay, and thank you for that answer, but let me point out that in the past, we still didn't have the funds when we did it, but we were going over salary schedules and things like that from the previous year's budget, so that the board, by the time it did make the decision, would understand more thoroughly what was going on. I believe you remember that, and you too, Mr. Boyer. There, there was just more information, so you could actually dig down and do, in the past, was getting what and why and where it was going. Not on you, I'm just saying that I, I think making the decision today, when I just asked a valid question, that was something we could bring forward, and that we could have probably explored earlier, would have been helpful.
Well, if I may.
Please.
We can go back and we can look, and, you know, whether here nor there, but I've worked with Ashley, and she's going a very more detailed version, because we go back and we look at the slides.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have to do salary configurations this year. If the, the Hill has already done that for us, so the 17 million actually fixes all of those things that you've been trying to fix over the years. So that's already there. The next portion of this is where you're going to, she'll talk about what's in each grade, so there's more to it, we haven't got to that portion yet. Remember, this is the superintendent bringing you the recommended budget, based on the ranking of what the board wants. So you ranked it, and so then the senior leadership team, what has already started talking to, well, they started back in January, talking to their departments. Once the state then came to us and said, these are your numbers, then they had to go and re-scrub and scrub some more to get this down to 2.5 million dollars as an ask.
So is there any, I'm sorry.
Well, you know.
Hold on, okay, Nelson, and then you go.
She had.
She had her stuff, okay, go ahead, I didn't see you.
I just want to clarify a question real quick, because, because I initially supported the 17 with a 1% step, and you feel 16 with 2 is better because it's going to impact the?
The reason I would say the 16 with 2, you know, when you look at the money, there's more money there, so the, the TAs will get more money, period. And the other piece of it is, you know, the TAs or bus drivers or, you know, everybody, custodians, you know, mechanic folks.
Classified.
Everybody. They, they would get, you know, somebody who's been with us for four or five years, or, or seven, or twen, you know, 30 years, they, you know, I think that they should get more money, not just 1% above somebody that is, you know, brand new.
So that, those are the two recommended from the salary study, these two options.
Right. Hang on, Mr. Boyer?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just a clarifying question, and then I just have a follow-up. So, Ms. Justice, are you suggesting that we ask for a $17, 1%, 2%? Are you suggesting that we ask for all of that from the commission this year?
Yeah, because we want to keep our employees, we need to.
Just a quick follow-up. And to Ms. Adams' point, I totally agree, that this is a crisis, it's come from the state, it, it's, it's bad. It's not of our making, but it's bad, and we have to do our best to deal with it. But we're talking about a 20% increase, and so I'm just wondering, the chair of leadership, I, I haven't discussed that with the commissioners, and I'm sure you guys have mentioned it to them, what was their reception to a near 20% increase to our supplemental?
What are you referring to at this point? There's an awful lot of.
So what I'm asking you is, when you discussed this with the commissioners, what did they say?
What are you referring to? That's a broad question, what are you asking?
When you suggested to the commissioners that we could have an increase to our supplement in the range of 20% in one year, were they receptive?
That's what we're talking about right now, we're discussing it amongst ourselves, and then we make a proposed proposal. I've talked, I've talked to at least one commissioner, but that's not my job, it's our job together to put together a budget, not go talk to individual commissioners, but do this all in public. This is supposed to be done in public, and that's why I was asking about the $17 an hour with the 2% yearly increase, because this is what we all need to be doing together, not talking to individual commissioners, trying to come up with different confusing situations. This is supposed to be for the public, not some kind of transactional situation.
Okay, Ms. Walker?
Well, I, I guess in lieu of that answer, I mean, I saw on the news this morning that there was a pay increase for county employees, probably to 17 an hour, I think.
Effective today.
Yeah, that's exactly, so I feel like the groundwork there for that, and there's an argument to be made.
They have 400 employees, we have 4,000, so that's just something to consider.
And it was really only for, for fine people.
They have 400 employees and the county.
It's only classified.
We're talking, yeah, there's difference between classified.
Well, I know they've got, we've got a lot more, but I mean, it doesn't change the fact of the matter that they need to be paid more, you know?
Dr. Faust?
So, when we had the salary study done, they only did the 17 with the 1% step. They would have, we'd have to do another MOU and get them to go back in and recalculate, because we've paid them for what we actually already had them do. So they have to have to go back in and do a new salary for the 1% step, that was not included in the MOU that we asked.
Could you do that?
Right, so we, they have not developed the scale, so what happened was, as part of the salary study agreement, they developed the scale, and then we costed it out based on the scale. So we, I, I don't have a scale for that at this point in time.
But how hard would it be to get hold of one?
Mr. Dr. Barnes?
Just a couple of points I might, that might be helpful. It's important to remember that a step increase isn't automatic yearly. A step increase only happens when the state approves it in the state budget. So when you think about the fact that some teachers who've been here longer, they may not have reached step 30, because they don't always correlate year to year. So, just something to think about, if the state continues to give step increases as mandatory part of their budget, then I think you'll see people starting to reach the bottom parts of the scale. The other thing is, and it's just an unintended consequence, and I'm not giving any opinion on it whatsoever, when we guys did such a great job of working with county commissioners to raise the teacher's salary, there were several instances where an assistant principal made less than a teacher working in a building. Unintended consequence, it is what it is. Either of these salary studies eventually will have teacher assistants and other classified staff passing by a first-year teacher. So that salary is something to consider, it's not certainly a bad thing, but it is a thing I want to make sure you guys work hard as well.
Mr. McManus, did you have something?
Judy asked a question, I'm just curious about the answer when she said 2% and 17, just what would that?
That's what, that's the number question, I'm trying to find out.
Yeah, I, I don't have, I haven't done that analysis.
And Q, that's what Dr. Faust just said, that we didn't contract them to do that. So is there anybody else interested in having Ashley go back and get that number, or are we okay with what the consultant put out for us?
Can I respond to that? We had the compensation study almost two months ago, right? At this point, if there was a desire for that, then it should have been requested at that point, in my opinion, because these budget conversations have been going now for months, and we've had an opportunity to respond, we've had the opportunity to speak with our superintendent, we've had an opportunity to speak with our commissioners. I think that we are in a very good place. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, Ashley, Dr. Faust, all of the senior leadership. So I just would like to say that in response.
Ms. Justice?
Okay, I feel like deja vu about the $15 an hour three years ago, sitting in the same room, the same conversation. Proactive is what we need to be. This is not a mystery. That salary study was a month ago, and I wasn't even sure how the budget would be presented to us until today. So that's why I did not ask you earlier to find out that information. We, there is no harm in waiting, do you know how long this might take to find out this kind of information?
I, I, I do not know at this time, I'd have to contact them and, and get on their schedule, and.
And we'd have to get a whole new.
We'd have to get another contract, I think.
Another board meeting to get an MOU signed.
Right.
Then we're.
But you're not capable?
Hang on, Judy, we're getting an explanation up here.
At that point, we would then be getting behind with, we have a timeline, so there's a budget timeline that we sent out about where we are, so we are scheduled for where we are, where we're supposed to be in our budget timeline that we sent out to the board, when was it, January, January, February? So we did send a, a timeline as to where we would be with the budget.
And I believe we go back to the county mid-May with our request.
Seven months away, a little over.
Well, we are, and just a reminder, the only meeting we have in May right now is May 3rd. The, we haven't officially said we're not having a interim meeting on May 17th, but just talking amongst ourselves, that's the primary day. And so three people would have to probably miss this meeting if we were going to do that. And, and then, of course, our, our community, well, we would probably opt to be at a poll, you know, if they're not working it, they're voting, or they're whatever. So we really need to be working on this, and come into some consensus, in my opinion, tonight, the, because we don't really have another opportunity, because you, you needed us to, you're going to tweak, and then you're going to come back to us on May, the May the 3rd meeting.
Final recommendation.
And then we, and then you go forward from there. So yes, Ms. Justice?
Well, she's had her hand up longer, but.
She's deferring, go ahead.
Okay, well, I was just going to say, we don't have, it's not set in stone, we can't get back together until the 3rd. You know, we can, we've called, we had, for our other budget meetings, the other, the first two years I was here, we had at least two to three meetings, and they lasted two hours, and we went over different things, so the fact that we could have, and they weren't tied into our regular meeting or an interim meeting, so if, you know, we wanted to meet in another week or two after we find out more information. If we need an MOU to find out this information, I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not a budget expert, I'm not a money expert, but it seems to me that this is an awful convoluted situation, just to find out a percentage across the board for figures. Is it going to be that difficult for this group? Did you come up with this?
Well, Ashley's working on our budget and making sure that the protocols are correct. Hill is a consulting group that comes in, and so we pushed them really hard to get that budget, was it the February, what, we told them February, first, was it, they had to drop due deadline?
They had to get it to us by February 8th for the March board meeting.
Right.
Right, the March board meeting. So they do have other clients, so what we're saying is not that it's convoluted, that I don't know if they can get it back to us in that, that deadline, because that's not what we asked for. And so we'd be asking them, we'd have to come back for an MOU, and then the MOU would then have to be signed.
And Dr. Faust, there'd be cost associated with that, too.
There's cost associated.
Right, we'd have to hire them again to do the work.
Well, I'm, well, she never.
Ms. Walker, everybody can stop there.
Well, back to your, to your question, everyone that I've heard county commission-wise supports education in this county, they have verbally said that they support it, and in fact, won't even say it this past weekend, that we got to bring it to them.
Mm-hmm.
That we're, we're the ones that are, that make the decision on salary. So hopefully they'll support that. I mean, I heard it myself, so.
Right. Mr. McManus?
Just a comment, everybody, when you put it collectively, when I've got this all spread out, and then I listen to different viewpoints and input, this is a big decision. It's the biggest decision for our staff that we're going to make. We haven't discussed esser in this conversation yet. So, I just, it's nice to hear everything and what possibilities may be, because this is monumental, and I agree, we need to ask for as much as we can. It needs to be very positive, because this is our chance, and I think Dr. Faust said it well, to try to make up for all those things that we're trying to now put forth to where it needs to be, to show the support that we're listening. And I think this is a monumental moment for all of us, not just the board members and the county commissioners, and anyone who's interested in continuing. And when we did our priorities, the environment and teachers were one of the top priorities for the right reasons.
Nelson?
So.
Mr. Boyer, sorry.
First of all, just, just to be clear, teachers are not in this.
Well, non-certified, they are, they're teachers in Cincinnati.
But what I would, what I would say is.
This is classified, we're talking.
I know that, I'm just, I.
I do think that both of these issues, or both of these proposals, the 17-1 and the 16-2, do show the, I mean, we're asking for a substantial increase, that shows our commitment, A, and B, we had this study, and nobody said, hey, wait a minute, this isn't high enough, we looked at the numbers, we had a presentation, we asked questions, and we said, these are good. So let's, I think we should, if we're going to ask for this much money, we should go with one of these in front of us and not go back and try to find even more. We don't know if we'll get this, by the way. I have some doubts.
Ms. Justice?
Well, we're, I heard the same person on Saturday, was it Saturday, last Thursday, say, bring us the budget, bring us what you want. So we're doing that right now, and I agree totally with Mr. McManus, we've got to be proactive, we've got to think ahead. Now, I'm, I do know that when I asked for the $15 three years ago, four years ago, Mary Hazel said she, she could crunch the numbers, at this point, it would be the 2% that we're looking for. She could crunch the numbers and bring it back. Do you, do you, do you have to have this particular group to be using the information they have given to, to change it from, to add the 2, to do the 2%? Or do you have to go through that group to do this?
Dr. Faust, you want to add?
I do, I mean, I would prefer it to be done by Hill.
But, can she?
Because she has, it's putting her behind the eight ball there.
No.
Yes, it is. On a day to, she has a, a job, she has other things that she's got to be able to do. She didn't do the salary study for us. So what I would like for Ashley to be able to do is show the steps, so that you can show the groups, the categories, because.
Sure.
I don't, I mean, if you're looking at 17 or 14 million, and then plus the 2.5, we've got to decide what to ask, and if you're asking for all of it, that's like almost a $20 million ask for our commissioners. I've not known for us in history to ask for that amount, and for them to supply, so we have come up with a stage, categories for us, for you to look at and to ask, and of course, that's where I think she needs to, to show you the rest of it, she has more information for you.
And then, Ms. Walker, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Adams, sorry.
So I have a question and then a comment. How many of the board members spoke with NCAE?
I can do what?
Spoke with NCAE, members of NCAE about this.
Well.
Because I did.
Well.
Okay? And I, in that conversation, what they asked of me is, would I be able to support these? They did not specify which one, they said, as a board member, can you support this for our classified staff? And I absolutely do. When the compensation study came forward, I'm in agreement with Mr. Bowyer that this is an increase. Would I like to see it more? Heck, yeah, I do. We all do. We know that our classified staff deserves the best. But I also am very concerned, it's great that one commissioner has said, bring the budget forward. There are optics at play here. If we bring forward a budget that is unsustainable or too large, they don't wanna look bad either. They don't want to have to come back to us and say, we're not gonna do that. We need to be working together to do what's best for our students, our staff, and our community. And if we try and make this confrontational and say, we need all of the sky, the moon, and the stars, and then they are made to say no, how does that impact our relationship? This is a partnership and we have to consider that. And all of them, again, when I spoke with NCAE, they asked me if I could support these. And I said, yes, I can.
Ms. Walker?
So, my point, kinda close to that, is we don't have our own money. We have to get money elsewhere. But we can't control inflation. We can't control cost of living, housing prices, anything like that. That is above us all. So, when our, when our TAs are coming to us saying, we can't live on this salary, we have to listen. And then, we have to put it forward to them. Because they end up an obligation to, to support the district and the school district. So, I just wanna say that. I mean, we can't control what happens around us. They already told us in the salary study that our, the cost of living here is way higher than it used to be. That's not our fault. We're listening to the staff.
Ms. Waterford?
I was just gonna say that we did have the joint meeting. And at the joint meeting, TAs were talked about. And they all said, we wanna support the TAs any way they can. So, I mean, like, and I, like I say, I don't, I've never seen a time that the county commissioners loved them to death. I've never seen a time that said, yep, whatever you want, we'll just write the check. So, it's gonna be a situation that we're not gonna get everything we want anyway. So, you know, I don't know why we wouldn't want to ask for everything we can. And then, they can say, well, no, we can't do this, we can't do this. And, you know, they're gonna have to do that anyway. Because, you know, there's other things that, you know, this list is quite extensive.
Ms. Justice?
Okay, I did talk to NCAE. And they represent not just the certified staff, but the classified staff. And they were asking for what they thought that they could give at the time. Thinking outside the box has become more and more evident in order for us to be proactive, things with the salary study and other situations. So, we can keep our good employees and not have them, want them leave. Our schools are imploding. And the truth is that there is an elephant in the room. And you've heard me talk about this and everybody in here, I think, have. We have an endowment of three hundred million dollars that's sitting there, that the county commissioners signed. And I passed it around, the actual document. It says, very first use for that money, I'm not talking about the one point five. That's what you guys kept talking about. I'm talking about the three hundred with, it takes a super majority in the county commissioners to use it. And there are plans you can use to be able to get all these things that we want. We could be the number one school district in this state. We have more riches in this state district-wise than any other one. And so far, I haven't heard any discussion, except maybe coming out of me and a couple of other board members and some other people out in the public. They keep denying that it's there, but it is there. They use that one, the student, which, you know, was shot at New Hanover. They were able to get safety officers and a couple of other things in place. There is an awful lot of things we could do with this district if we approach the county commissioners to do the right thing by our schools. I mean, every daily, daily, I'm getting calls, emails, just the horror and the shock of teachers leaving right and left, children in crisis. And there are solutions. And this budget can carry out these solutions. And that's just one of the many calls, the seventeen dollars point and the two percent step that I'm talking about. We need to be, start thinking, with that money in mind, that was promised to us. That's what that document says, public schools, number one use for this. So, some of you in here wanna deny that was said, deny that was signed, deny that was what the hospital money was promised to us. But that's fine. But in the meantime, there's just one simple thing. We need to start thinking proactively. As I said, this feels like deja vu. And we shouldn't have to keep reliving it over and over.
This is an embarrassing conversation that you cannot understand, the community endowment. It's an embarrassment to this board.
Stop it, please.
Can I jump in? All right. Okay. The, are you done for?
Well, well, I was...
I think you've stated your point.
Well, yeah, because it's a fact. Stop it.
All right. So, I would like to have a turn to make a comment on this kinda stuff. So, question for you. As we're looking through what you wrote down here in the ones, the twos, and the threes, it looks like our number one priority doesn't even get anywhere near as much money as our number two priority. We're getting like three hundred thousand less. And we haven't even talked about the, the steps that you're gonna talk to us about in just a moment. So, we said that we wanted other things to be first. So, I think we need to look at that, my opinion on that. Second of all, I just, I have a question on, and wanted to clarify, that we're not talking about teachers with this money. We're talking about all classified, so I think we need to stop saying TAs. Because we're not talking just TAs. We're talking classifieds. So, I think that needs to just, for people listening who don't understand that, I think we need to mention that. Does any of this money in here actually talk about bonus money or master's level pay or national board level pay? So, where would that fall in?
That's teachers. Bonus money is one-time money. This is reoccurring money that we would ask. This is only local.
Okay.
This is local funds. That's all weird, out of the operating budget.
Where does, where does master's level pay come in? Does it come from the state? Okay, so if they haven't given us the money, we would have to say, we want to use local funds to give that?
That would have to, we'd have to go, yeah, we'd have to scrub our...
We would have to make a conscious decision to do that?
And remember, those are reoccurring.
Yes, yes. I just, I just wanted to clarify that because there are some people listening in who wanted to make sure that that got brought up and wanted to hear an answer. So, I appreciate that answer. And we'll, and I'll hold my next question. Why don't we just go ahead and go into your blocks, Ashley, so that we can, we can get that information?
So, we'll go ahead and hand out the sheet for both seventeen and sixteen. You want me to pass some out?
Why she's passing those, is there anybody that has an interest in delaying the process and looking for seventeen dollars with the two step? Is there any, all I just wanna see is, a show of hands, does anybody have that interest right now?
Well, could you wait until everybody passed it out and clarify that one more time?
Yes.
Should we motion and have a vote, I think, on that matter?
We can, but we'll go, I was just killing time. We're just seeing what people's general grasp holds. So, we'll, we'll look at both of these and then we can talk about that again.
Okay.
And I want us all to keep in mind that this is not our budget. This is the superintendent and his staff's budget. And it's up to us to look at it and to approve it, with tweaks or not. So, that's, you know, keep, keep looking at that lens. Because this is not our budget. Once the budget is established, it's our place to make sure we stay within that budget. So, just keep that as a lens. Okay, Ashley, would you go ahead?
One sec. This is a New Hanover County schools budget. It's not anybody's, but the whole school districts.
Okay, I would beg to differ, but let's go ahead and talk, Ashley.
Okay. So, if we'll first look at the option, that's the sixteen dollar minimum with a two percent step. And of course, we've got the total cost of the seventeen million that we talked about earlier. If we were to break this into a three-year plan, if we go down to grade fifty-seven, which will allow us to pick up the teacher assistance that we have been talking about, that would be an additional seven point nine million dollars added to the budget. So, that along with the five million that we talked about previously on the other document, would bring us to roughly eight, I'm sorry, thirteen point eight million dollar request to the county. And so, if, so if we were to break it into three years, we could also break, have the next break for next year go down to grade sixty-five. And that request for next year would be approximately four point two million. And then, we could pick everyone else up the third year. And that would be approximately three point eight million. So, our thought was to start with our lowest paid employees and try to get that money to them as quick as possible. And then, if we had to break it up over a three-year period, that we would gradually go up the scale. And then, of course, the second year, you know, being less money than the first year. And then, the third year would be a little bit less than the second year. So, that's, that was the plan, to break it up into three years, if we go with the sixteen dollars with a two percent step.
Ashley, is there a possibility that with this plan, that when we get money from the state next year, you know, if there is additional money, that we would be kinda under?
That's already included.
Okay, okay. I mean, for like the next year.
So, the, if they have, if they approve a budget, remember, so they have, we're thankful that we have a two-year budget.
Oh, okay, right, I forgot.
Right, we're ahead of the game because of that.
Right, but sometimes that budget does not come...
Timely.
Right. And there have been times where there has not been, they take pieces of the budget and... Ashley, will you also explain about cafeteria workers and how the revenue comes for, and what we have to do?
Yes, sir. I have included at the bottom, child nutrition. This increase, we would need to pick up. Now, bus monitors and the cafeteria workers, both of those groups, we would need to get them to the fifteen dollars because they're not making that at this point in time. The cafeteria workers, remember, the child nutrition or the food service program is self-funded. So, they, they cover all of their revenue, all of their expenses with the revenues they collect during the year. With this large increase to them, I don't think they would actually be able to fund it all by themselves with their revenue that they're expected to have come in next year. So, that's the reason I'm picking up that four hundred and ten thousand dollars for them, to help them out if they're not able to cover that expense.
And that, what you mean, that's a new cost.
Yes, right.
Because they generate their own revenue by lunches. They can't keep up with that.
Right, currently, we're, we don't provide any funding for them. They're able to support themselves. But with this salary increase for them, I think we would need to help them out with that salary.
And are bus monitors in the same category?
No.
No, bus monitors, I have them broken out separately because that group was not included in the salary study by the Hill group. And so, the numbers weren't matching exactly what they had shared with us earlier. And so, I just was trying to keep that separate, so we didn't get confused with that. And you notice, even though this, so this document is saying sixteen dollar minimum, but you see that those two areas I have at fifteen dollars because they were not included in the salary study. And then, for a bus monitor, if you bumped them up to sixteen, they'd be making the same thing as a bus driver. And so, we were thinking, we probably want our bus drivers to make sixteen and not the bus monitors making the same thing as a bus driver. So, that's why we kept the monitors at fifteen, which is the same as the child nutrition.
Gotcha. Ms. Adams?
Ashley, just to, can you clarify again? Business to sixty-five, if this were on a three-year scale, business through grade six, or excuse me, bus through grade sixty-five, that's year one?
Bus through grade fifty-seven is what I would do for year one.
Okay. And then, what was year two?
And then, year two would be grade fifty-nine through sixty-five.
Okay, that's what I heard, okay. And then, the rest would come in?
And then, yep, sixty-seven through seventy-eight, we would pick up in that third year. And I wasn't clear on that, I apologize.
Thank you.
Anybody got anything else before she goes on?
So, what you're saying is this would be the grand total within three years?
Right.
So, this is not even for this one year, say, if we were doing this all at once, that's what it would be, the total. But since we're trying to break it down to make it more manageable for the approval, I guess, of the people giving, getting, we're getting the money from, or possibly the public or whatever.
Right, so certainly the board, and so, that's why I wanted some, to determine, or have you guys shared what the pleasure of the board is, so that I would know, are we doing a full request of the total amount in one year? Are we breaking that up? If we break it up, our recommendation is to not break it up more than three years because you just, it loses something, I think, with the staff if you start breaking it, implementing over longer than a three-year period.
So, so we have that choice of having a full request with this? Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, we're just trying to give you lots of options.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Dr. Barnes?
I'm adding stuff up.
Dr. Barnes would like to...
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Barnes, I was calculating what the year one looked like, sorry.
I need concentration while I use my calculator too.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add to what Ashley said. If you look at the classified jobs and give us the most turnover, hardest fill rate, we struggle consistently with bus drivers and custodians. So, the places that, I think you're leaning in correctly in an HR standpoint for those cases first.
Okay, case anybody's interested, it's eight million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and fourteen per year one. Just, if people were just trying to grab their arms around that.
It should be for year one...
I just added up those, sorry.
Yeah, for the options, sixteen dollar minimum with the two percent step, the first year would actually be, if you're talking about just for this salary study, right, it would be seven million, nine hundred, seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. We're doing bus through grade fifty-seven.
Okay, I thought I had this. Okay, then your number's right. What is it, seven, four?
Okay, let, let me go back. This is why we have a difference. So, the difference is, remember when we went through the new program request, that first document we went through? I'm already having, I'm already bumping everybody up to either the higher of fifteen dollars or two and a half percent. So, I subtracted that from the cost I'm giving you because I'm covering that anyway. So, that's a difference. Sorry about that.
That's all right. It's all, it's all kinda relative, okay. All right, anybody have any more questions, so we can go on to the seventeen? You can always come back, okay?
Okay, so on the seventeen dollar minimum with the one percent step, if we're gonna spread over a three-year period, we would recommend those same breaks. We would cover bus through grade fifty-seven, so that way, we can pick up our teacher assistance. And that dollar amount for those ranges would be six million, five hundred, ninety-five dollars, seven thousand, I'm sorry, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. I'll say that again, six billion, five hundred, ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. And then, year two, we would pick up grade fifty-nine through sixty-five. And that dollar amount's gonna be three million, five hundred, seventy-eight thousand, twenty-one dollars. The third year, we would pick up grade sixty-seven through seventy-eight, so that would carry us to the end. And the cost would be two million, seven hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
How much was that second figure?
Yep, three million, five hundred, seventy-eight thousand and twenty-one dollars.
Do you mind doing this last one again?
Yeah, no problem. Two million, seven hundred and eight thousand, two seventy-nine. So, based on those two options, those two plans, does the board have some guidance for us as far as moving forward?
Comments, anyone?
Yes, Ms. Justice?
Okay, I think we need to ask for the full amount right off, right off the bat.
What full amount?
The full amount of what, instead of going through the three-year increment, go ahead and ask for the full amount.
For which one?
Oh, for the, well, either one. I, I myself want the seventeen, seventeen dollars an hour with the two percent step increases. And I think we should ask for, that part, we can vote on later. But right now, I would, you know, the discussion is, it needs to get done now for everybody. Why should anybody have to wait? I mean, I know it's more practical, and you're saying it's more, we all know. It would be more palatable technically for the county commissioners. But they themselves keep saying that they want the absolute best for what's our schools. We do have the access, even though, as I said, some people do not want to look at it clearly, with the endowment funds, we could do some kind of overtime, some kind of working with them to try to continue our district growing in a good way. But this would be a good beginning.
Yes, Mr. Bowyer?
So, um...
And then, Ms. Adams, okay.
But when I came on this board, we were at twenty-nine hundred dollars per pupil. And we fought like hell to keep it in the first year. And we moved up, I think, what did we receive last year, a ten percent increase?
Thirty-four, thirty-four.
Yes, but what was the percent increase from? It was over ten percent because we received thousands.
Yeah, I can't remember the exact increase we received.
Twelve, twelve and a half percent. Now, we're talking about an additional twenty percent. And look, I have a hundred percent in agreement. This is so important, it's critical. It's not just our problem, as I said. But when I begin my budget season, I call each commissioner and I say, what are you thinking? What are your goals? What is the financial situation in New Hanover County and where are we headed? What kinda budget year are we talking? And I can promise you from those conversations, you know, you guys say you don't like to be blindsided. You are giving them the mother of all blindsides. It is not a little amount of money. It increases our budget seven, and again, look, I'm all for making an ask. But I just want you to know that you are blindsiding our funding partners.
Hi, Jim. Oh, yes, Ms. Adams, sorry.
I actually just had a question. Is it feasible to do two years? Is it feasible to do two years? What would that look like to do it in two instead of three?
You want us to do it for both?
I'm just curious, yeah, like where would that line fall and is it possible?
It's still a lot.
It's still a lot of money.
It's still like, you know, a trillion and seven million.
We also, we don't know what the status will be of this county next year, right? I mean, as people come back in, sales tax may go up, we may end up with a budget overage, which would be fantastic, right? And so, maybe we'd be able to enable a different number next year.
And from what I read during the, from their last discussion, that they gave their immediate response today to first responders, firefighters, and one other, you know, EMS, firefighters, I mean, it was definitely first, oh, definitely, and Sherri. Yeah, it was definitely first responders. And then they were going to be going back and voting on what they're going to be increasing their other employees too. So, they're.
They got that, that's just starting July one.
Okay, is that what you were talking about, the number? Okay, I didn't pay attention to that, so that was coming. So, they are definitely taking care of, you know, the county employees as well.
So, can I comment now? Hello?
I'm sorry, yes.
All right, nobody's being blindsided, they signed that document last fall. This discussion's been out for a couple weeks, if not longer, about using those funding. And so, calling them up individually, you know, that's your prerogative, but I think that we should be doing everything upfront into the public's eye. There's already been enough things that haven't been done in the public's eye, and that causes people to have grave suspicion about what goes on behind closed doors, which I don't think a lot does. I think what really needs to happen is everything needs to happen upfront in front of the public when we have this discussion with them. Now, that's going to be on them because that's, you know, that's their responsibility. But they did, you know, they did do a wonderful thing when they decided to use that fund when they were coming to the agreement with the, I guess, the contract between Ovitt and the county commissioners. And they did say, number one, would be the public schools.
Did I hear you say it wasn't a wonderful thing that they gave our teachers supplements?
I didn't say that, what are you talking about?
Okay, I thought I heard that.
I had, I said, think about it.
Dr. Faust, could you explain to me, or would somebody help me? What exactly a school-based specialist is? Seventy, there's several of them. And then phys, I'm thinking that the therapist is actually a physical therapist on seventy-eight, but I'm not sure.
Sorry, I crossed my brain.
Oh, okay.
Seventy is one.
I would have to defer to HR.
Dr. Barnes?
Watch me try to defer to Ashley, I'm not sure what that.
I don't know who those people are exactly.
So, I can answer part of seventy-eight. So, therapists would be occupational therapists and physical therapists because they fall on this, they don't fall on certified here.
Thank you.
Where do our school mental, are our school mental health workers all?
We'll get that information for you to clarify that.
Thank you.
School-based there, school-based specialists.
Our, our, our social workers, our school psychologists, any mental health providers that we actually pay for and don't contract with the county, are they salaried?
They're classified, I mean, certified.
Certified, okay, so they're included in the.
They're certified, yes. Yes.
So, oh, yeah, Ms. Walker.
I'm asking, it's a process question. So, you take in the budget, do they turn out and say, I'm going to do this, but.
There they are.
Do they, do they do counters?
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I'm just curious, I'm a process worker.
They can.
So, typically what will happen is we try to come in as close as possible. So, we have to always understand that, let's say we ask for forty million, it's going to increase your property taxes. They said, yes, it's going to increase property taxes. So, they have to generate money in order to pay for this because it's a reoccurring issue. So, let's say, yes, you, in a utopian world, they were going to say, yes. So, then we put them at seventeen, it increases the property taxes, so now they're back to the beginning. So, we have to think logical about it. And then, what I will have to do is, my staff knows, is on Monday, if you were to say, okay, we're going for seventeen, we're going back to when we were wiping out everything to get that price down so that I can take a sustainable budget to the board commissioners so that when I'm presenting that I'm not putting anyone in a jam.
That's the reason you gave us the three-year option.
Yes.
So, can the, is it typical that the county commissioners enter into a budget agreement with us for multi-year? Or should we get, or is the plan to give them the seven million, blah, 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 if we were to do the sixteen million with the two, sixteen minimum, or to give them the sixty-five number? I mean, do we normally, is that something that we do? Or should we hold on to those numbers knowing they're coming next year?
So, what we have to do, what drives, Ashley and I know this, how much they give us per student? So, when they gave us twenty-nine, whatever, twenty-nine hundred dollars per student, so when they went up to thirty-four, thirty-four, that provided us more money to do more things. This year, we know that they're not moving from thirty-four, thirty-four. So, we've got to make sure that we make do with the thirty-four, thirty-four. And then they've already calculated how much they're going to pay for students. So, we have that portion, the ask, and they did, they actually lowered the number for students. Now, I have to get that, I wasn't prepared to talk about that.
Yeah, they actually, last, last time I spoke with Michelle, they're leaving our student numbers the same as this year. So, the funding that they gave us, the student number they use this year, they're going to use that next year just based on their preliminary information. So, that was just preliminary information that she shared with me, based on their work sessions.
So, that would basically put us around about the eighty-eight. And so, then, there's, you know, of course, there's the six point four million that's going to charters.
Right.
So, you have the eighty-eight plus the six point four, you're getting almost, well, you're getting over a hundred million dollar ask. So, then we have to look at the trends at the board and see, what is the trend data told you about? How much have they given? So, there's like a whole lot of analytics that go in behind. So, that again, we are causing friction between the two boards.
I do have an answer to the question.
Oh, so did I.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris. So, if we go with a two-year phase in for that sixteen dollars, two percent step, and just assuming we would still start at bus, and if we go through grade sixty-five, which is where we were going through that second year, then that would bring that request to twelve point two million. And if you add the five, I think it was five point nine million that we talked about on the previous page, that'll bring us to eighteen million dollar request, the five point eight, yeah. And if you do a two-year plan with a seventeen dollar minimum with a one percent step, and you go down to grade sixty-five that first year, that'll be roughly ten million dollar. And the ten million plus the five point nine is fifteen point nine million.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Barnes, Dr. Barnes, did you have a follow-up?
No, I had a different, I had a different answer.
Okay.
Class seventy is athletic trainer. It's a very small number, it's the only one in that job code. I'm sorry, John, did you already give them the answer?
Does that cover both? There are two different lines. Does that cover both of them?
That covers.
Seventy, and then you get seventy-three, it also says school-based specialist.
Seventy-three.
I got it, I got it. Okay, Ms. Adams, yes?
I just wanted to make a comment. I would like to say that the commissioners have been incredibly supportive of education, and I'm very grateful for the moves that they've made to support our district over the past couple of years. But I think one of the things that we have to think about, they got a lot of flack last year when we had teacher pay raised, you know, they got a lot of pushback. And they took that stance, and they did that to help us recruit and retain top-tier teachers for this district. You know, we have constituents that care about what is going on within our educational system, but they also have constituents that they have to answer to. And so, I think that we just have to be cognizant of that while we're having this conversation. We've got to fight for our district and what we need to see for our students and staff, but at the same token, it's a balancing act, and I think that we just need to be aware of that.
Um, Judy?
Okay, thank you for saying that because we should all be fighting for our students, including the county commissioners, which I see that they have done. What I just wanted to clarify is, because I think from what I just heard you say, and I just want to clarify this so that everybody knows. So, you're saying that they're going to hold the same number of enrollment that we had this year for next year?
Right.
When figuring, so, good, so that's what I needed to know.
And I will say that came through a work session, so they haven't voted on anything yet. That was just part of their work session conversation.
Oh, all right, so it's not, it's not set yet, but that was what the assumption, and we don't.
That was just a work session, so I want to make sure.
All part of the budget process, so they have to tell us so that we will know what to do. So, if they said, no, we're going back to twenty-nine, then we have to come at a different, and so it's.
And that could differ depending on commissioner to commissioner, just like when you ask us questions. You know, our opinions vary on different things. Ms. Walker?
So, this is probably going to blow your mind, but they're expecting us to be very careful with our budget when we ask them for things. So, are we making sure there are other places we can meet them in the middle with in the budget?
So, yes, so the group, everyone, the seven individuals have known, when I told them they're going back and they're going scrub, they're like, oh, crap, I'm sorry I said that. They came with this utopian budget, I was like, no, two point five. And they didn't bring in two point five, so I had to do the, I had to be the author. Yeah, that word, and say, no, we're going to mark off. And two point five is what I said, two point five. And so, if they'll have to go back and have to go back to their department and say, okay, Christmas isn't coming. So, we've got to take this off, we've got to take this off and everything they had in. And I talked about the Sears and Roebuck catalog at Christmas time back in the day, how would you get in your circle? It's like, nope, you got to knock that off your list because you have to put that on. And we have a list where we say, they know their priority list is year one, so maybe year four where they have to ask for these things.
So, I guess the follow-up to that is, I know we have different, we have what we, we are pie charts to show where our money comes from, but we do have, which, you say, we haven't talked about ESSR yet. And I know we're spending a lot of money on one-on-one technology, which I think is a great thing. But there are places that maybe if they look at us like, huh, no, we're not giving you that, can we pull and put something off to maybe, because I just think our budget priority needs to be the people, you know, our staff. And I feel like that should be our top priority here. And if there's things we got to wait on, or maybe move stuff around, and we supplement it, I'm just putting it out there because I just feel like they're going to be looking at us going, well, you're asking us for this, but what else is in your budget that maybe you guys can look at?
Ms. Walker?
Well, and I'm just going to piggyback on that. I spent a good portion of today, last week, I went to several schools. And at least at the elementary level, I heard almost unanimously, and a lot of, a lot of principals that actually have assistant principals said, we need assistant principals at every school. I mean, and that's just something that one person went on and on today about the situation that said, you know, I can't imagine trying to do this all by myself. And typically, what happens, another program at that school suffers because somebody has to be pulled out of their role as maybe a coach to come in and do some of those testing or whatever else. So, I mean, I don't see that anywhere on this list, but I think that is something we want to, we should definitely talk about. And then I had one principal today actually tell me that she thought that TAs at the upper level would be another really strong, you know, we want to, if academics is truly that important to us, which I think it is all the way across the board, the TAs, you know, not one-to-one per class, but maybe one per grade level at, you know, fourth grade and fifth grade would be a huge help.
Ms. Justice?
Yeah, and that's one thing that when we did have our work session, I heard, you're talking about the ESSR funds, that they really wanted us to be more creative with the use of them and put it into our staff because staff should come first, like, and you were talking to a principal, I talk to teachers, that's just my makeup, okay? They contact me. But daily, too many of them are leaving and not coming back, TAs also. This is serious stuff, very, very serious stuff, and they can't even teach now. They're overloaded, they're covering classes, they can't plan, TAs got way too much on their plate. We need to look about adding positions, we need to be creative. And that goes also because we definitely, when we had that joint meeting, the county commissioners were just as frustrated as we were about what's going on in our schools. So, asking them won't hurt because they want to help, they said it, they stated it. And this is the only way we're going to know for sure, is we ask them, we can, everything's always a compromise. But if they've got the ability to help us, we need to ask them for it, and they do more than anybody else does.
So, the question, Mr. M, I know you have, I can see a question formulating in there, but your hand went up, someone would jump in front of you. The, we, if you go back to this pie chart, the, our number one priority that we picked was student safety and wellness. So, that is, you know, like all of our decisions that we're making, if we are going to add to number, number two, which is the supportive environment, not that I'm saying that we don't need that, but we already ranked these things. So, I think as we're talking through this, we have to keep that in mind, that we collectively, as a group, decided student safety and wellness, number one, supportive environment for teachers and staff, number two, and there was only three percent, you know, difference there, and then academic performance, number three, and they're all only separated by three percent. But, so, after that reminder, Dr. Faust, are we going to see, and Ashley, are we going to see at any point what some of the drill down is? Like, where did the number come from when you say? The, like, I see, like contractor, that's not, that's not an easy one. But like, when we're talking about what some of the things that our senior staff and their, and their departments put in that goes into these numbers? Like, let's just say equity, for example, that we, what did they want? What did the staff want for equity? What did the staff want, I mean, just some of that I can example of?
The line description tells you.
I know.
And if you need a little bit more information, I do have some more information over here I can share. If there's a particular line, you have a question, and we have everyone in the room, so we could probably provide answer questions.
Some of this probably is, if I go back to the strategic plan and kind of line these up, you guys already put some of those general things you want to cover. Would that be a better use of our time for me to go back and just look at that and then ask a question if I have later? Okay. The, yes?
Follow-up to what you just said about our priorities. Wellness and safety is attached to the staff big time. I mean, this is how we provide wellness and safety, especially mentally and emotionally these days. We need, that, that is safety, that is student support. You can't really, in fact, when I was looking at the priority list, and I kept saying this to every department head when I walked by and was ranking them, is we can't pull these things apart and rank. They work very closely, you got to feel for what it is we as a board thinks is important. But these things are so interconnected. There is, you know, as far as I'm concerned, one and two are the same thing.
When we're cutting things, when we don't get our number.
But based on your goal.
You, you have to, you're going to have to cut if.
We base this on the goals that you voted on out of the strategic plan.
Right, right.
So, that's where these six items are from the goals. And so, then you went around, and based on the goals that you gave us, you did it. And then we built a budget based on what your goals were.
He gave us.
And so, that's what we.
Right, and that's what I was trying to get to.
We're giving you what you asked for in the ranking.
Well, you gave us the goals, I mean, the strategic plan gave us the goals. We didn't give you the goals, the whole district gave goals that we were interested in.
We approved the goals.
Well, we can't, we can't separate these things.
So, if you recall, we had a work session where we determined the goals.
You don't have to redo this, I know.
No, I'm just saying, but that's what I, that's what I was trying to bring us back to when, when we're talking about where, what we're going to, what we're going to cut is if we overshoot, you know, to Ms. Walker's point, if we overshoot, and the commissioners say, no, you get this much money, then Dr. Faust and his team have to go back and strike out some things. And so, they're going to strike out based on what our numbers are.
And interpretation is huge too, as far as.
No, it's not interpretation, we already gave that direction.
That's what the, that's what the whole goal thing was, is interpretation of what you think fits into what goal. And what I'm saying is, a lot of these things fit together. You can't just say this one, 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 two, 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 this is how it goes, because one, two, and three. That's organically how things work, it's not.
Okay, so, unorganically, Hugh, do you have a question?
You know what, when I speak for myself personally, when I voted for the list starting from top to bottom, and I wrote on my little board, I said, student wellness and safety, which affects teachers as well, and student environment, staff environment are the key to academic performance. It's another whole discussion, but, I mean, expectation, I won't go into that right now. We're in a situation where it's a knowledge bidding war for employees. So, we're talking right now about non-certified, non-classified. When people are making twenty bucks at Burkina Kean, when people are, I mean, it's phenomenal what's going. When people are making twenty bucks at Burkitt King, when people are, I mean, it's phenomenal what's going on with inflation. I saw the other day the average home in Hanover County is three hundred, up in three hundred something thousand dollars. You can't count the apartments, because as soon as you count them, they're bored, they're already completed. So we're in a competitive arena, because everybody wants to come to Wellington, well, we're all part of that as well. But I think that we need, and we owe all of the information we received that we solicited to make a decision about one, either one of these or the other, as a minimum. Do you think the county commissioners would support this?
No.
You do?
No, I do not, but I'm, I'm all for asking.
But you didn't speak up when all the people were standing up and talked to us, and we all agreed. You didn't say, I can't support that.
I do support that.
I thought you said you didn't.
No, I said the county commissioners will not be able to give us that money.
But, but that's the first time I've heard you say that publicly, I mean, I wish I'd have heard that earlier.
I don't think they're going to.
Because I've not heard that.
Hang on, hang on.
Long story short, I, I think that we need to concentrate on one of these two, because that's what we basically.
Agreed to.
It's where we've come to, these are the forks in the road.
So can I ask a question, Dr. Faust, maybe you know this, or maybe Colin can advise. So when we give, and it's kind of back to your, your point, when we give the budget to the county commissioners, they accept it as is, or do they have line item, we don't like that line, we don't like that line. So isn't it that we present a budget and they go, okay, I can buy that, or no, we're cutting some money out? I mean, is, is that a statute at all?
So, general statute, works like general statute is, you know, I present a budget, recommend it, and the board suggests, and then I get permission to go to the county commissioners. County commissioners is actually their money.
Right.
So technically they get to say yes or no, because we don't have any money. We get money from the state, we get it from the feds, and we get it from the county commissioners. So what we're technically doing is saying, this is what we want to ask for. Even though you may approve it, you then have to go and ask for it. And then, can they ask us to remove things? I mean, they could, they typically don't get down in the granular, because they're at the, the dollar ask. I, I don't know.
They agree on a total, and then we cut, that's actually what it is. They said, we'll give you extra balance, how you do it, so.
Well, I'll present a budget to them with the line item, so if we move it out of a line item, then we have to go back to them and ask, we'll give, it's called a, an adjustment, what's the?
Budget amendment.
Budget amendment. And so I have to go back to them, even though it's, they've given you approval, but because they only give us, I think it's like ten percent.
Ten percent, I think it's ten percent.
Ten percent, so it's really low threshold of movement. So anything more than ten percent, I have to go and ask them, can we move it? And they can say no, and then we can't move it, because that's what our ask is.
So Colin, I think I saw your face come up, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, so essentially, what Dr. Faust said, we, we're going to the county commissioners and asking for an amount of money. We're not going to the county commissioners and asking for them to approve our budget down at the line item level. That's not what the county does, the county decides, the county looks at the budget that the board has voted on, and, and sees what we're intending to use the money for, and then based on that decides how much they're going to give us in local current expense, and how much they're going to give us in capital outlay. And, and so they're not, they're not sitting there and vetoing line items that we are presenting in our budget. The statute does say that the commissioners, in their discretion, can allocate part or all of their appropriation by purpose, function, or project code as defined in a uniform budget format. But typically that's not what you see, normally it's just, we submit the budget to the county commissioners, and then they decide how much they're going to give us in local current expense, and how much they're going to give us in capital outlay.
And you said purpose, function, and what was the third one?
Project.
Profit?
Project.
Oh, project, I'm sorry.
And, and they do allocate.
Okay, right, okay.
They do allocate, they do provide our appropriation at those levels.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you, Colin, anybody have any questions thus far, or?
So, I do.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Back to the original question that Ashley, so we have, like, year one, two, three, for seventeen, sixteen, or we have all in seventeen and all in sixteen.
We just got price for two years, while.
Oh, and a price for two, and then two years, sorry, thank you, and that. So that's what we need to know, so that we can then come back and finish our, our budget. Because you also have a capital outlay budget that you've got to ask the county commissioners for. And that one is seven point eight million, which they're asking for. So that would put us about twenty-eight million dollars, if you're asking.
So, um.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what you're saying, you just read over what you have written down as what we have agreed on?
You, you give us your priorities.
Right, but you just made a statement about two or three things, like the sixteen point two.
He was summarizing, he was summarizing all that we've heard.
No, we've heard other things, but it's okay. All right, and, you know, part of this is that we can go down the line next year, for example, since right now it seems like it's not, we don't have enough time to find the information about the seventeen percent. We could go down the line and say that, say next year, we could ask for the two percent, and find out the information before we present the budget for next year. So that would be a consideration. Also, you said that two years, as opposed to three years, which is sort of a compromise, because I think that it would be a good idea to ask for the full amount now, but you're saying that the county commissioners would balk at that. But I'm still thinking proactively, I'm very concerned about our employees. The sooner we do it like now, the less we're going to lose. We've got professional people that love their, love their profession, but they can't survive, they can't pay their bills. So would, you know, to me, it doesn't seem like such a strange ask to say, do it now, not wait two years or three years.
Ms. Waterborne?
And I would kind of like to talk about, you know, I, I've noticed, I've talked to several of the folks that are, what are they called? You know, the skilled laborers, and they can make a whole bunch more money to walk right out the door. So, I mean, and fortunately they're in year three, so we, you know, if we did it one year by, you know, we're going to lose half of them too. You know, and skilled trades, I'm sorry, that's what they, they're classified here, so I think it is important. If they're in year three, I mean, I think we need to go for it all, you know, that's my own personal opinion on that. But, I mean, I don't think we want to lose our skilled trades people, and, you know, all sudden lights go out and we're, well, sorry, we don't have anybody to take care of that.
And Ms. Faust? And that's the same rationale that the county commissioners just used when they gave their skilled, their, not their labor, what did you do?
Skilled, skilled trades.
Skilled trades, their raise, today, was it today? So how can they, you know, not understand what we're?
Yes.
Again, this is kind of frustrating, because these are the conversations we're supposed to be having with commissioners before we all sit up here and meet. My discussions with the commissioners, my discussions with the commissioners were about, were about the plan that was presented. And when we talked about that three-year plan, they said that is going to be extremely difficult.
Because they don't want to budget, because typically they don't budget.
It's not that they don't want to either.
They don't budget year to year.
There are limited funds, we keep talking about this three million, three hundred million dollars, that's embarrassing, please stop saying that.
Why is that embarrassing?
We don't have access to it, that's not how it works. I've talked to them about doing that, they have absolutely no interest in doing that, it would be financially irresponsible. They're not going to do it. They're not, it's not that they're bad people, it's not that they don't love our staff, it's not that they, we're all worried about our staff, every single one of us, I said, we are in a crisis point, it is not our making, we are trying to get out of it. But you act like we have this magical three hundred million dollar pill, and it's irresponsible.
Quit saying that, that's rude.
Ms. Walker?
Well, to Mr. Waterborne's point, it is, you're right, it's not our, we don't have the funding. So they're understanding the same things that they're dealing with their employees, it's the same as what we are as well. And we have to ask them, because we don't have alternatives, like, we know from the study what is needed, we have to ask for that. I mean, whether it's done in one or two years, or whether, whatever we decide, we have to do it, because we are in a crisis as well with employees, and we don't want them leaving, because we don't have them, then how are we going to function? And so unfortunately, they might not like it, but it doesn't mean we can't ask for it, because we're here to do that.
Ms. Walker, I mean, Ms. Justice?
Okay, no, we don't have access to it, but they do, and they did sign an agreement. And I wish we quit saying things like it's an embarrassment, and we're supposed to be talking to people behind closed doors ahead of time. That's not how this is supposed to work, we were elected to do things in public. I've been passing, I've talked to a couple commissioners in passing and mentioned it, in fact, one of them even agreed.
Now, sir, now, sir.
One of them even agreed in public last week to a whole bunch of people, that yes, they can do this with their super majority, and that they probably should, because that's what was, that was the power that was given to them, we don't have that power.
Was that in a campaign? I just have a clarifying question, I just have a clarifying question, was that a campaign event, or was that in a public meeting, that comment?
You know what?
It does, it does matter.
You know what, that's like talking behind closed doors, I'm just refilling the same kind of information that Mr. Water is obviously relating. Now, let me get back to this point, they have the power and we don't. But this is exactly what Ms. Walker said, this is extremely important, I'm fighting for our employees. There is money sitting in a bank right now that was promised to use to improve our public schools. And we have, if we've ever been desperate, and I've been in education over thirty years, we are extremely desperate now. If we want to do right by our employees, and thus our children, because our children depend on it, our public education system does, then at least we can ask.
Okay, so Ashley, did you have anything else to present to us?
We need to.
I need.
Okay, no, I mean, as far as, before we get to capital?
No, we still hadn't decided if you want to do.
No, I know, I'm getting it, I have a.
Yeah, this, yeah, this was the last thing we got to have.
So before we get down to voting on those, on deciding on that, on what? Did anybody have any questions from the beginning out of this packet that Ashley asked, and we decided we were going to hold our questions? I want to make sure that we have just, you know, a couple minutes to ask those questions, yes?
Mine's just a quick one, when we were talking about six pre-K classrooms, how many students is that?
Oh, that's a good question.
It's like one to seventeen at that age, right?
Sixteen or eighteen.
I think it's eighteen students per class, I believe.
And that's two adults.
And so the long, I had that question as well, will we hear about any renovations that you think might be necessary in the capital outlay?
The county has asked us to submit that budget request separate from our.
Okay.
I'll actually include it in this estimate, so once I have that number, I'll be able to update that field.
That's on the commissioners' ad.
Yeah, on the commissioners' ad, okay.
That's the six additional pre-K, the estimated estimate.
I'll add that, it'll be included in the amount on line item thirty-nine.
Okay.
I have a follow-up to that. Do you know how they're, they're, where they're getting the funding? Is that from raising the taxes, or are they taking that from a certain part of money that we do?
I, I do not know how they're funding that.
It might have to do with the, because I remember hearing that that was one of the priorities they wanted to do was expand pre-K program. And I just, I was curious where they were getting the funding for that.
Yeah, and so that might be, but we don't get to say how they send their money, just like, we would hope that they wouldn't dictate how we spend ours.
I'm glad they agreed that was important, that's all.
The next thing I had a question about was in the, the four additional teaching fellow scholarships. And maybe this isn't the right place to ask it, I'm all for that. If, if we don't have enough students apply, can we do, does it matter when in the year we do it? Like, if we have a first semester and a second semester selection for kids that like graduate early, that want to be teachers?
We haven't addressed that with them, that I can think, typically it's just been at the end of the year. So no, they haven't given us any guidance on.
Who's the they?
The county commissioners.
Okay, okay, I was just thinking that some, some students will graduate in December, you know, legitimately with a, with a plan, celebrate a plan because they want to get to school, you know, to be a teacher, so that's one of the, that's the only question.
The only requirement I remember is a seven thousand dollars a year for a student, so that, that was the only requirement I ever called.
Yeah, okay, did anybody else have anything up, up in the beginning of this? Okay, Ashley, continue on.
Okay, so if there are no more questions on the program budget request, then we'll move over to the capital document. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We want to do this vote?
We have to.
Okay, okay.
We have to do.
Okay, so, do we need to, like, make a motion? And the reason I didn't ask that question right now is because I didn't know if we had to adopt the whole thing.
No, this, we need to put this in.
Into the plan, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, on the table. Yeah, Ms. Waterborne?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
My quick, please, I'd like to make a motion, we accept the sixteen min, uh, minimum of two percent step all in one year.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Well, I wanted to amend, well, I've got a good second first.
Is there a second?
Questions?
Sure.
May I?
Mother, may I, yes, you may. I thread rover, you know.
Okay, leave my mind. What do you mean, in one year?
Well, doing, instead of doing three years, you know, we had the three years, the two years, or the one year.
Ask it now. He wants to ask for seventeen million, seventeen point six five five. Is there a second?
I'm going to go ahead and second.
Okay, so there's a second on the table, any more discussion on that?
I would like to amend the amendment.
No, we're not going to amend, let's just make motions. Let's vote on motions, we get ourselves so bogged down, I would like to.
You don't want to follow the commentary procedure.
Colin, am I allowed to ask that we just vote on motions at one at a time?
If any member does have a right to make an amendment to a motion that's, that's been made, properly made and seconded.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to amend that, let's do it, I want to keep our employees, I want to amend.
Judy, what's your motion?
Okay, to, to have it to seventeen dollars an hour with the one, we can look for the one percent step, and then go ahead and do it in a year.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, I need a second.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, no second to that motion, so that one, we're back to the original motion, which is to do the sixteen minimum with two percent all in one year.
Ask for it.
Okay, ask for that, put, do that, any more discussion? All right, Ms. P, oh, Ms. Justice?
Well, since I couldn't get that amended, I think it's a great idea to do that at least, because we've got to keep our employees. And there's no harm in asking, all they can do is say, go back to drawing board, and then we can redo it. But we really need to do the most we can right now, to keep as many employees, and to hire new employees, so that our schools can, especially our classified staff is so important, we need to do everything in our power. And this is how we can do it, keep them on staff.
Mr. Pete?
I'm a better one than you too, sorry. But no, I mean, and that's the exact point, you know, you look down at these other folks towards the end, I mean, they're so important too. And I mean, like I say, I guarantee you, we're losing people in the HVAC area and, and other very important areas, and they would be in year three, so, you know, it'd be great, you know, I don't want to overtax the county commissioners, but I mean, my, my love way I look at it is, if you don't ask, you know, if they say no, they say no. But, or they say, hey, let's just cut that in half, but if you don't ask for it, then the answer is definitely no.
So I would like to make an amended motion to that then, that we do the sixteen minimum two-step in two years, to go year one to be bus drivers to sixty-five, and year two be sixty-five to seventy-eight.
A second to that.
Is there any discussion on that? Ms. Justice?
Same, same argument I had right then. Okay, we are going to lose people right now, over the summer, whatever, if we put things off. I cannot understand, I mean, compromise is great, and we can compromise after they say no, but I see absolutely no reason at this point not to at least try to keep the wonderful employees we have and bring some more on board, because we are shedding them every day.
Okay, is there any other discussion on that motion?
I just would merely like to say that, you know, we all acknowledge how hard our employees work, and we all acknowledge that they deserve a pay raise. I also think that we cannot ignore the partnership and relationship that we have with our county commissioners. They are under immense pressure, just as we have been under immense pressure with a lot of different issues, and I think we need to be respectful in our ask, after many years of support that they have been increasing our funding and showing their support, I think that two years is a good compromise. I don't know if even that is going to fly, but I think that it's a good compromise.
Ms. Walker?
So, so to clarify, so the sixteen percent, the two percent step, or sixteen million two hundred and seventy in the two-year plan is twelve point two in the first year?
Yes, plus the, plus the additional five point nine.
What do you mean for the second year?
No, the, no, the, the additional five point nine that we're getting from the state. Oh, no, we're not getting, on page one.
Plus the line item.
On pa, I'm sorry, it would be paid on line item one and two, I'm guessing, is that right, Ashley? Is that where you're getting the five point nine?
Yeah.
From line item number one and two on the third page. That's that extra that she tells us.
It's, yeah, so the, that five point eight is the total? It's, yeah, so the, that five point eight is the total. It's actually on the last, it's your totals on the last page. I think that's what you're asking. Um, the grand total, new funding request, the five point eight million is what I'm add, I'm adding that number to whatever the cost is.
Okay.
Of this, okay.
So, it'd be like twelve point two million is what the number you gave us.
So, I was just clarifying that. So, it's twelve point two.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? All right, Ms. Billy, will you please call the roll? Um, start with Ms. Justice and we'll just go around the table.
Which state? Which one we're voting on?
The, the, the amendment to, that we're voting on the amendment first. And the amendment is to, um, vote on sixteen dollars minimum with two-step increase in two-year increments. The, so, it would be bus driver down to sixty-five and then sixty-seven down to seventy-eight. That's what we would be, that's the amendment that we're voting on.
Plus the business and the.
Oh, yeah, and I'm sorry. And then, so where, where would business and C and, and child nutrition, do you want that into your?
The bus monitors. Yeah, so that's actually, we'll be able to pick them up just through the state mandated raise.
So, we don't have to go down, we don't have to include them in this vote?
Right, yep, that's right.
Okay. So, that's the vote. Um, Ms. Billy, could you please call the roll? Um, starting with Ms. Justice and we'll go around the table.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Craybill?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
And Mr. Bullier?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes six to one. Um, is there any other votes that you need from us, Dr. Faust, before we move on to capital outlay?
I have to complete my, I'm at.
So, does that imply because we, we did that, that this is what we're going with, your everything?
We're gonna have to go scrub.
You're gonna have to go do some scrubbing?
Yeah, we gotta scrub.
Oh, because you have to make that, okay.
Yeah, that'll take us all out.
Okay. It's gonna take us out of whack. It's like seven million dollars.
Their faces. Yeah, we're gonna have to scrub. Monday, we'll be scrubbing.
Okay, and then, so scrubbing means that you will scrub according to our priorities, correct? Ish?
We will, um.
What makes sense?
We will take care of it.
Okay, all right. I just love it having, so we're all in agreement. Okay. So, next, capital outlay. Oh, wait a minute. There was Pete's motion on the table. Do I have to vote, we have to vote on that? I know that because it doesn't make sense. That's why when we do the amended by, we don't, we don't.
You can withdraw.
Withdraw. We're still gonna have to vote on it. We have, we started it. You have to vote on it.
Colin, do we, since we voted to pass this one, do we have to just make an official vote for Pete's original motion?
We've, so we've, so Pete made a motion and then you voted to amend the motion, correct? So, then the, the main motion is now on the table and needs to be voted on.
Okay. So, the main motion on the table was, um, Mr. Wildebohr said sixteen dollars minimum with two per, two, two percent step all in one year.
No.
And we had a first and a second on that.
Now, the main motion is the amendment that we just, that we.
We passed the amendment.
That passed.
You made an amendment. It passed. We're done.
No, we have to vote.
I thought Colin just said we have to vote on the main motion.
Which is now sixteen.
So, the main motion, the main motion is now.
Two years.
The, the, as you have amended it to be. And so, you voted to amend Pete's motion and, and so now it's been amended. And so, but now you need to vote to approve that motion.
But I think they voted on the.
Amendment. We voted on the amendment.
Right.
Not on the motion.
It does, I know it seems duplicative, but those are, that's the way the process works. So, you, first you vote to amend, which you, which you did, and now you need to vote to, on the actual motion.
Will you re, 'cause I lost.
Yes.
Oh, she'll have to listen to it. Okay.
So, we, we just voted on the amendment which said six, sixteen, sixteen dollars, two, two step, two percent step in, in two years.
Yes.
Okay, that's what we voted on. And that was the amendment. And now we have to vote on the original, even though it's kind of counterproductive. Um, not, it's, no.
No, it was on the table. He made the motion. That was the original.
The amendment replaced the original because the amendment passed. So, now we just need to state it again.
And then vote.
Sixteen, two percent, two years, and just revote again.
Okay. So, motion on the table is a sixteen-dollar minimum with two percent step over the course of two years. Using bus drivers to sixty-five as year one and using, um, sixty-seven to seventy-eight as year two. And we had a first and a second. Or do we have to get another first and a second?
Mm-hmm.
All right. That's the motion. Uh, I made it. Second, anybody want to second that?
Second.
Okay.
Uh, he made.
I thought we were starting a whole new one. You guys are just confusing him out of me.
You don't, it doesn't need a, it doesn't need a first and second.
Okay, all right. So, um, Ms. Billy, would you call the roll?
Ms. Justice?
No.
Mr. Mr. Wildebohr?
Yay.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Craybill?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Aye.
And Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Okay, now, on to capital outlay. Sorry, Ashley. Sorry, I get lost in the.
So, you'll have a capital outlay packet and the front, um, document is a summary. And behind that, you have all the detail. And so, as you can see here, we're, we have for next fiscal year, the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three recommendation, um, for repairs and renovations. It's that six point six million. And then, technology is the five hundred sixty-four thousand. And the vehicles, three hundred and fourteen thousand. And furniture equipment, two hundred and eighty-three thousand. So, that gives us approximately seven point eight million dollar request. Of that request, the four point six, you can see at the bottom chart, uh, the county appropriation request would be the four point six million we have listed here. And we are able to use lottery funding for two point seven million. And we have some, um, a state athletic facilities grant and also some reimbursement through, um, insurance that we're able to fund the other capital funding request you see there.
And I just wanted to remind us all that we've seen this capital outlay, um, at least once, um, already.
Yes, and this is the same document that came from the committee. We haven't made any adjustments to it.
Question, Ms.?
Yeah, Ms. Wildebohr.
So, with the recommendation, obviously, we have to bring it to the county commissioners anyway. But as we vote on this, are we voting on the whole thing or just on the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three recommendation?
So, we wouldn't vote for this one until next time. We'll bring them both. So, right now, we're looking and going through.
Okay.
And when we bring it back, we'll bring it back with the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three as the recommendation. And then, we just wanted to share with you for the future what, where we're gonna start next year.
Gotcha.
Ms. Justice?
Yeah, and probably Eddie can answer this about vehicles. What amount of, uh, what is this, that, you know, the vehicle, um, buses, uh, other forms of transportation that the district needs, what is that amounts going to school buses, the vehicle one?
Could you repeat the question?
Okay, uh, under the, some of the.
The vehicle request?
The vehicle request, there's two different years. And, um, I would like to know what, how many school buses are going to be asked for for this, or just other, other forms of, of transportation for the district.
If you, um, so go to the backup for vehicles. Um, it is. It's the second to the last page. And you can see what vehicles we're recommending replacing.
Uh-huh.
In year one, we've got three maintenance vehicles and, um, child nutrition, a refrigerated box truck. And then, um, in year two, we're asking for a purchase for a new activity bus.
Okay.
This, this would include local vehicles only, uh, none of the yellow buses.
Okay. That's, I'm just trying to find out. And thank you for pointing out where it was.
Any other questions related to capital?
So, do I think that, that there's funding to cover this already, right? You're telling?
Yes, we, we have identified funding now. Of course, just as before, the county appropriation, we will submit the recommendation and then however much funding we receive from them, we would go back and adjust what we can fund based on the money we receive from them.
Okay, does anybody else have any other comments, questions? Children in the back row?
Mr. McManus is playing music and stuff, so.
I'm going to move you to the front row with the quiet people on this side. Do you have, um, any other things, Dr. Faust, that you need for us to do?
I think we're all tired.
All right, anybody else?
Could I just make one comment?
You may.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Wildebohr. Uh, Mr. Wildebohr participated in the capital outlay committee meetings. Uh, Ms. Justice, I think you did that last year, wasn't it? And so, uh, that.
And I snuck in.
This was, this was pretty quick. Uh, but I assure you, the meetings that the two of them have sat in in the past were much longer and, and gone through in much greater detail. And I appreciate, uh, the input from both of you. So, thank you.
Well, you had a lot of great information.
Appreciate that.
Madam Chair, move to adjourn.
Oh, we're not ready to adjourn yet.
Oh.
Um, next on our agenda is announcements. And so, the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee will meet on Monday, May second, beginning at five P.M. At the Board of Education Center. Um, the May regular board meeting will be held on Tuesday, May third, beginning at five P.M. in the Board of Education Center. The policy committee will meet on Tuesday, May tenth, beginning at nine A.M. at the Board of Education Center. Um, so now I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Justice?
Yeah, discussion. So, uh, we're gonna have to alter to a certain extent now that we've decided what we're gonna be, be asked. And then, we're gonna have it come back and then we're gonna approve it during a board meeting or how's that gonna work?
At the March third meeting, we'll be bringing back. I'm sorry, May third, May third. We'll be bringing back the official, um, request.
Okay. And, and also, in the past, we've had salaries and different positions across the district and who was paid what and why, uh, during our budget meetings. And, uh, that's not, and, you know, everybody does things differently. But I found that extremely illuminating when we were going through those budget processes, uh, for the first two years when I was on the board.
So, would anyone from the senior staff tell about, um, any, um, uh, positions that you'd like to share?
The, the good thing about that is you could literally go through there and see what was going on. And I think as a board member that that.
Right. But would you like, who would like to share why they don't see anything?
Okay, just to be clear, we, we had a motion to adjourn and so we're holding off on that motion.
Well.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying because we're, we should have asked these questions back when I asked whether there are any questions, but.
They didn't make the cut.
Okay.
The cut of what?
Well, for me, I mean, that any positions I needed for HR, really in my mind was secondary to the need of the salary study. So, I sort of removed any positions that we were looking for in our budget simply because I knew that that.
Okay, you asked for a discussion before we adjourned. So, I asked at the right time. I did not appreciate you saying, okay? Um, now, the thing is, is as I said, it was very useful for us as board members to see that, what was going on, on the inner workings of literally every, every position and staff across the district. It was very illuminating. And you can have better ask, a better understanding of where the money possibly needs to be looked at. And that is why I requested it because that was very useful, having been in schools for over thirty years. That's what our job is. We are supposed to have oversight.
You will see if you look in the line descriptions.
No, it literally had every position in the district.
Maintenance position for auxiliary services supervisor. All that's in, you have all that oversight.
It literally, it literally had it.
We got it on our own independently.
But we didn't go over line by line what's there, but we scrubbed and there's gonna be some more scrubbed.
Thank you very much.
We've got.
No positions.
You have everything.
All right, so there's a motion on the table to adjourn. Hearing the sentience to that.
Okay, I, I really liked sitting next to her. I'd like to do that again. Um, I was asking literally about the end of, the numbers of all the different people we, this is, I mean, it was literally broken. I was, I, I, I was put here to.
Judy, just continue on with your comments, please. Ignore what you're seeing.
I would really appreciate, and I, maybe it's too late now because we are in such a time crunch. But it would have been very useful for all the board members to be able to look and see how many positions, who was paid what, not, they didn't even have names. It was just, well, they think they did actually. I'm trying to remember. But that was extremely useful for us to understand what was going on in the district here. And then, during the budget talks, we could bring things up, uh, as far as different positions go. Like when you were talking about the assistant principals. Not that we don't get it over to all things, but it was just a really useful to have literally every position in the district in front of you and you could see what was going on, longevity, supplements, extras. For example, we've talked about, new board members, some of them that haven't had experience in schools, didn't realize that we don't have supplements for our TAs in this district. Something like that would have told you that because in other districts, they do. I mean, that's just really good, useful information, especially for people that don't have an education background. And are trying to find out how the system has worked, who's paid what, how long, and, you know, and their, you know, their criteria for doing it. So, that's what I was bringing up. I, I would, is, is it, I guess, as I said, at this point, it's a very late stage, but future budget development, it would, that would be very useful for people and staff, especially when you look at it now, we are gonna have a lot to do now next year when we do a budget. And so, there'll be once more new members. This time, they'll, you know, I don't know if I'll be on the board or not. In either words, no, we don't know. But you will have new members. And that's very useful for them to understand how the district functions and how people get paid and why.
So, if, if you have further questions, then talk to Dr. Faust and maybe he can share that information with you that you're looking for.
A second adjournment?
Yeah, I know.
This is only our, this budget is only made up of your local funds. So, you're talking about a broad stretch budget, but we're only here for the local.
So, we are adjourned.
Thank you.